Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our briefing session for today. It's a double briefing session since we were off last week. And I'll first have the clerk call it roll.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone is absent.
All right. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perkins for July 18th advanced agenda.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. This is the advanced briefing for Monday, July 18. We're going to start with items one through five, which will be briefed by Mike Cannon. Item one, final renewal for Two Rivers Terminal. Item two, renewal with Olin Corporation. Item three, BioSolids disposal awards with Bartek LLC and Boulder Park LLC. Item four, an agreement with Power City Electric with the Public Works Division. And finally, item five, Public Works Agreement with McKinstry Company. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So number one, as was said, the looking for approval for the second and final review with Two Rivers Terminal LLC for chemical delivery of sodium bisulfite. The current rate will be $2.58 a gallon for a total of $335,400 for the year. Any questions on that one? And number two, this is a similar one, looking for approval for Olin Corporation to supply liquid sodium hydroxide at the treatment facility for $259 per gallon for a total of $564,620 for the year. Any questions on that one? Number three is in two parts, essentially. It's a consent to award a BioSolids disposal contract to Bartek from an RFQ 5681-22. It's a multi-contract award with one other vendor. The total combined amount of both contracts will not exceed $300,000 over five years and between Bartek and Boulder Park Incorporated. And 3B is the same with Boulder Park getting about $5,000 worth of that $300,000. And any questions?
You said that was over five years?
Yes. Moving on to number four, Power City Electric, we're looking for a contract. And they were the only responsive responsible bid received for a, to install electrical service and control equipment for an additional plant water to pump, which is a 300 gallon per minute pump. We have four, now we're adding the fifth to keep up with the water demand from our new membrane filtration facility. And then McClintock and Turk will be the subcontractor who will install the pump and associated valves and piping. That was 27865 for that contract.
And they were the only bid on that one?
What's that?
They were the only bid on that one?
And number five is a consent to award McKinstry HVAC maintenance and upgrades for the plant. It's part of a, the plan to upgrade both occupied and non-occupied HVA systems at the facility, and it's $139,860 for the year. Any questions on that one? All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Item six on the consent agenda, three-year lease agreement with Brothers Brewery. Our presenter is Raylene Jeanette.
Council President, council members. Yeah, this is a three-year lease agreement with Brothers Brewery for the plaza maintenance over there at CSO 241, which is the one over on, what is that, Adams and Sprague area by KHQ. So they'll be doing the maintenance to the top of the tank and taking care of that for us. It's a three-year agreement with two one-year extensions if needed, or if they'd like.
I have a question. I do have a few questions for you. How much maintenance is it? It's pretty much a hardscape, and it seems like...
There's lawn, there's sprinkler systems, there is a multitude of different things over there that they would be maintaining, also keeping the concrete from anything that's happening, spills, that kind of stuff, cleaning that kind of...
Have we assessed what the benefit? It's a fabulous place. I love to go there, but it essentially gives them amazing outdoor seating that I've heard other brew pubs are like, yeah, we want that deal too. And I'm just wondering if we've assessed what the value would be if they were renting that on the fair market versus the cost that they're doing with them?
I don't know that we have assessed that value at all. We've done, in the, for the last two, maybe three years, done yearly agreements with them, and not necessarily this company. It's been different ones when it first got started, so. But it is a, you know, it takes a lot for city staff to go out there and do some of that same stuff as well, so. You guys want to add something next?
Could I add to that, too? Because I've had a conversation with both them and DSB who wanted to manage that, and it's open to the public. So it's not, it's closed at night, so they close as any park would be, but it's open to the public, so they're actually maintaining that for public use as well.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'm just concerned with, like I say, other places. It's the benefit to them, how much it is if it's requisite to that.
There's also, there's a couple of other complicating factors there, too. The easement we have with them, part of that was already granted to them in the easement because we limited the use of their building, so they cannot build any higher. Their intent was to add floors to that building, but because of the CSO tank adjacent to the building, that was limited, so we granted them a permanent easement for part of that space already. So it's for the other space, and they also are required to program that space as well. So it's not just for the maintenance, but it's also for programming the space. And they do, they have provided us with estimates on how much money they're investing in programming the space and giving that space to nonprofits to use and so forth as well. So there's multiple benefits to that, and it's not just for the maintenance. We're getting, we're getting more benefits out of it.
No, it's, again, great programming, but every time they have programming, they sell a lot more product because that...
True.
So I'm just wondering what the benefit, the piece I'm looking for is what's the benefit to them. I agree, they give us benefit. I just want to make it, it's pretty equivalent, because when I'm talking with other private businesses going, hey, wait a second, is this in proportion? If it's in proportion, then it seems like, hey, it's a great deal. But if it's out of proportion, then other people sort of have a bone to pick with us. So that's what I'm wondering. Not that you can answer it today.
Yeah, I don't think I can answer that part. But I did want you to know that it's, there's a little more complexity to that, that we do have some other benefits that we're getting out of it as well.
Thank you. Item seven on the July 18th consent agenda, advanced briefing, accept funding from the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. Our presenter is Major Eric Olson.
Good afternoon, Council, Council President. I am here to seek your approval to accept funding from WASPIC to continue our sexual assault kit grant for the 2223 fiscal year. It comes up to about $173,000, and I don't know if I may be so bold as to ask, while there's also an attached SBO that will, if anybody has any questions, that accompanies this as well. For progress, I can tell you that the notes I made for, from Major McNabbie says, "We are making great progress on the project and hope to have SPD caught up by the end of this grant cycle." That is a significant body of work that I don't think most agencies can say in the state. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Major. Item eight, a budget amendment with Catholic Charities of Spokane, increased funding from the Emergency Solutions Grant provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Our presenter is Heather Page.
Thank you. So every year, we're on this five-year award cycle. Every year, we have new ESG normal entitlement grants come in. This is a yearly amendment for that. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you.
Item nine, a low bid for the 2022 Residential Chip Seal Project. Our presenter is Dan Buller.
Good afternoon. Item nine is the 2022 Residential Chip Seal Project, which is blank on your agenda, but we opened bids this afternoon. And Shamrock paving of Spokane is the apparent low bidder at $769,000 approximately, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. We still need to check bids carefully for all the appropriate criteria. Shamrock's bid was the only bid received and was over the engineer's estimate by $240,000, which is about 45%. This project is funded by Transportation Benefit District.
Thank you, Mr. Buller.
I guess I have a question there. So what do we do when we have just the only bid and it's significantly over what we estimate?
We weigh our options. First of all, we see what the budget is. Second, or what the, what the initial, the engineer's estimate was lower. The funds that were set aside, in this case, covered that. There's, that's one part of the answer. The other part of the answer is we're in an inflationary environment. We have no alternative, so it's either defer the maintenance or pay the piper. It's not a great choice, but chip seal contracts, just for what it's worth, chip seals, a technique we've used in the city for the last number of years, the chip seal contractors are set up to do miles of county roads in the middle of nowhere, and in town, there's a fair amount of, you know, driveways and cars and parking and whatnot, and so the prices we get aren't as good as we would like. But it is a preservation technique that is much less expensive and buys a few years on the roads.
Thank you, Dan. Items 10 and 11, regular items for our consent agenda. Item 10, report of the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. That information will be completed for the July 18 council meeting. And item 11, city council meeting minutes, which will also be prepared in advance for the discussion, consideration on Monday, July 18. Moving then to special budget ordinances, we have two involving, one is the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, the other is the Police Fund. These actions arise from the need to complete training facilities and equipment, and our presenter is Jackie McConnell.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council. So the first one is an ask for $283,000 out of the Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund. Those monies will go towards updates for the academy primarily. It'd be about $70,000 for carpeting. Our carpet out there is very old. If you've been out there recently, it's pretty embarrassing. There's huge stains. It hasn't been replaced for, from what I can tell, 15 to 20 years, and kind of asking around when was the last time it was done. We also have a very antiquated target turning system, which really only allows for shoot-don't-shoot type scenario. Newer target turning systems allow you to vary from each person on the line. So maybe I'm standing there, I see one target, the person next to me might see a different target, or maybe their target doesn't even turn. So there are a lot better training systems. That's about $150,000. And then an update to the audiovisual equipment. And then we'd like to do some training for the department through Caliber Press, and that's about $3,000. They're giving us kind of a good price on that. They're doing it for $99 a person, which is at a reduced cost from what they normally charge. And so that all totals out to $283,000. Are there any questions on this piece?
I had a question. I know the legislature, if I'm understanding this fund, it's, the legislature giving us money for training around the changes in the laws. Is that what this fund is?
Yes, sir.
And how, how much money do we have left? And how much of it's actually going to go into training around these new laws and procedures?
So honestly, I'm not positive about how much we have left. I knew that, I know that we had sufficient amount for me to ask for this from this fund. And so the training facility, as you know, it's used for training for agencies really throughout the state, but especially on this side of the state. And we do a lot of training where we bring in other agencies, and some of that training has been for some of the reform training that we have done within the department and other agencies have come in. So I'm looking at this as this is an update to a building that we bring people in to do training, and it's all, the training is related to the reforms. Not everything that we do at the academy obviously is related to that. There is general training, but we are very much a regional training center. Things like the target turning system really allow us to be much more up to speed on firearms training and when we can shoot and don't shoot, and allows us to put in a little bit more of kind of de-escalation training even on the range, whereas right now, we don't have that capability. Everybody has the same target, they all turn at the same time. And then the one piece that is definitely the training in here is the training that I'm asking for Caliber Press for about 30 people in the department.
So I guess my request is maybe our next public safety, if someone could go through, this is the money we got for the training, and this is the stuff that we can relate directly so that we can see. Just because I, and again, these are all things that need to get done, so I'm not critiquing that at all. It's just that my recollection of what we've done so far, and then some other requests that are coming down the pike, they all seem to be things that are more general application and then not really the focused trait. So it'd just be good to have a report on that.
Okay. Any other questions on that piece? I think the next one is pretty easy. So we do two training academies for the Criminal Justice Training Academy per year, and we have a, an MOU with them, and through that MOU, we ask for them to basically give us some maintenance fees for our building. So from this last MOU, we got $26,676. I'm just asking to use that money to specifically fix the carpet in the classroom that we use for Balia. There is one classroom that is pretty much what we call the Balia Classroom. And so to fix that carpet, and then also to get some training equipment and some new mats, which are heavily used by our recruits at the academy. So I think those tie, both tie in very well for the funds from CJTC and using them for things that are related to CJTC. Is there any questions on that one? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. The next special budget ordinance, I believe Major Olson may have referenced this in his previous introduction of item seven, so we can move forward to special budget ordinance involving Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund. This action arises from the need to procure necessary equipment used by the Spokane Police Department Bike Unit. Our presenter is Lieutenant Dave Overhoff. And Captain Dave Singley.
Good afternoon, City Council. The Spokane Police Tag Team is asking or seeking or requesting $192,000 to purchase a transportation truck to haul our equipment and a trailer as well in addition to that.
And these are for the bicycles?
Correct, sir. We have 44 members of our, on our team with bikes and then all the equipment that goes along with that.
And are, where are they stored right now, downtown?
Half are stored inside of the repurposed meth lab van, and then the other half are inside of the old intermodal precinct.
And I'm going to channel Councilmember Zepone here, he had this question before, which is, how often do we use the bikes outside of the downtown area?
Probably at least once a month for sure, but we train, the problem is, we, that's where we train, is outside the downtown area because of what we do. As of late, we've been averaging about one or two demonstrations or events outside of the downtown core area, to answer your question, so.
One or two per month?
Per month, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So thank you for, your briefing paper was textbook, as we've talked about, it was great. And this is, to my mind, part of a step toward neighborhood policing in a way, because bicycles are more friendly and accessible item for people to feel like you're with them, not sequestered in a, in a car. And so I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, this can get us closer to where we want to be in the future for getting police and people to interact a little bit better, so.
Absolutely. We, as you well know, we've had a lot of accolades in the last two years since we've had this program in the bike, the bike team downtown in the core area, and of course, working on these very large events that we do work. And the, the community loves us, to be honest with you, they truly do. And we have a great, great relationship with them right now, so.
Yeah, I wanted to add, I think the bike patrols and events have been just fabulous. I've walked with them through one of the marches in 2020, and the response of the crowd, the crowd cheered them. I mean, it was really distinct difference from the one the week before, so I'm a big fan, so.
Thank you very much.
We toured the downtown precinct last week, and I would suggest that you just add about $15 for a light switch in the room that stores the bikes, because there's no lights down in there, but...
In the downtown precinct?
In the downtown precinct. Wherever they had the bikes stored, there was no light switch in there.
That would be the captain's, that'd be the captain's. I'm in the old precinct, I'm in the old intermodal, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Captain Singley. All right, our next special budget ordinance is from the Internal Service Fund. This action arises from the need for additional contract support, the launch of the e-supervision, e-prosecutor, and e-defender systems. Our presenter, who I believe is online, is Dusty Frederickson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We are taking our remaining E-series systems live in September 2022, so this coming September, and we are looking to leverage $70,000 salary settings to continue our vault resources who are providing skillset capacity for the project, not only to launch the systems, but also to stabilize the systems and the users post-go-live through the end of the year. Any questions?
Thank you, Dusty.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is under an emergency ordinance determining the process and criteria for citing essential city facilities, and I'll turn it over to Council President Beggs.
Yeah, that ordinance just tries to codify what the public process should be for essential facilities. That principle of doing that has been around a long time. When we cite fire stations or any other kind of major things, libraries, things like that, we like to have some public engagement, so people who would benefit get a full say, and people who might not get a benefit, might have a detriment, get a full say. So, and this would include police precincts as essential facilities. I did have a comment from City Legal that we should make it clear that the City Council doesn't approve the sighting of libraries, the library board does. So this would just bring that, bring police precincts into that, so.
Thank you, Council President. Up next are under resolutions and final reading ordinances. This first resolution is providing for assessment segregation for Liberty Avenue from Oak Street to Ash Place. Our briefer once again is Dan Buller.
So this item pertains to the parcel against which there is a local improvement district assessment, or LID. The property owner has applied to segregate the parcel into two, but to do so requires an active council to reassign the LID assessment between the two resulting parcel as detailed in the proposed resolution.
Thank you, Dan. Great job. Our next resolution, setting a hearing before the City Council for August 22, 2022, for the vacation of portions of Boy Scout Way and Gardner Avenue between Washington Street and Howard Street. Presenter Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, Council. What we're doing here is, that you see in purple, is the actual potential vacation of Boy Scout Way would be on the east side. Yeah, it's over in the very, that one, right there. Yeah, we're actually trying to vacate the two areas in purple. In the middle of those two, we've already vacated Boy Scout Way and Gardner Way previously, and so as part of the stadium project, they're just trying to vacate two more pieces of that. Would be Gardner on the west, the bigger one, and Boy Scout Way on the east side as part of the stadium construction. The PFD has not asked for any compensation relief yet, so we put the $47,000 would be what that would cost if you actually charged the vacation for the right of way. I'm assuming they will come in and actually ask for that at some point in time. We are setting a hearing for August 22 on that. We used to have city utilities in both, in that section of Boy Scout Way and Gardner Avenue, and we have relocated those already, so they're out of the way, so we don't need to reserve any easements for that. Anyway, that's kind of what's going on. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, you, you said that the, the PFD might be asking for some sort of relief on the, the cost. Is that tradition? Have we traditionally provided them with low, lower no-cost?
We did on the podium, based on public benefit on Cataldo down there, so I was assuming they would come back in and write some justification. I have not seen that yet, so we tabbed what the cost would be.
Right.
If they don't ask for that, $47,000.
Okay.
But that has been kind of the, the norm on this area over here when we did the podium, and I'm assuming they were going to ask on the stadium, but have not seen that yet, so we put the cost in there. Be happy to answer any other questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Up next, we have two resolutions back to back. Updating the Economic Development Strategy is the first one. The second one is a resolution, Administrative Policy Aligning Changes in the Projects of Citywide Significance. Our presenters are Terry Stripes and Steve McDonald.
Thank you, Johnny. Good afternoon again, Council President, members of council. As Terry's getting set up, I just wanted to remind you of the, few of the key factors that we took into account when we came up with our strategy, and that is, we wanted to align all of the incentives, whether that be the existing incentives that we were revising or new ones that we're going to be proposing, revise those and tailor those incentives so that they match up with our overall strategy. And that is to focus our incentives, our limited incentives we have now, and our limited resources in the, in the most distressed areas of the city. That, that's the whole goal of this. As, as a city, we don't have a lot of incentives. Some have sunsetted, others have not been funded. We're trying to revise those, but we're going to focus in the, in the absolutely most economically distressed areas. We're going to use objective data, and we used objective data to set the area that we're going to focus in. Our targeted incentive area is fact. It's, it's, it's based on census tract information, so it gives us the highest poverty rate, areas in the city. And then importantly, with limited resources, it's much easier to market this to the development and business community and residents, and it's easier to administer. Some of our programs that we had put in place were pretty difficult to administer and involved a lot of steps. We tried to simplify that. And the other point to make is that we're doing this with the utmost flexibility. So as we all know, with the housing crisis that we have now, we're using our economic incentive programs to focus on housing and... on housing, and we will do that for the foreseeable future, but allowing for the flexibility at later times to add in other types of economic development.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, guys, today we're going to talk about two pieces of legislation that I'm asking you to approve. One is the Economic Development Strategy. This was last updated back in 2015, so we're taking current situations into account with that. And then, projects of citywide significance, as Steve mentioned, this was an incentive that was only used to target large, $5 million projects or greater. It took approximately two months to get through the review and approval process of the PERFORMA, and then to figure out an award and get it through council, so that really slowed a development project down. So what we're talking about is creating criteria that have to be met outright, so we don't have to go into this long review process. We also are not going to make cert, we're not going to only allow this incentive to be used for large projects. So currently, the only funding for this project was funding that was allocated by the council under an ordinance or a resolution that Councilmember Kinnear brought forward, and that's for projects of citywide significance to tackle affordable housing. So we're going to talk about that, too. So again, just remember, like Steve said, we are targeting this and our economic development resources, staff, and incentives to those economically distressed census tracts. Now, just over an hour ago, we were talking about multifamily coming forward with that, too, but this now is saying that our economic development strategy is targeting our staff resources and our incentive resources to the, that area. Similar to what we looked at earlier, this is that map where you have the green area that's economically distressed. This is one census tract that I called out for you.
When you talk about focusing staff resources in those areas, okay.
For now, it is me. We hope that in the near future, we will have an economic development team again, but for now, it is me. So, this target area that we're also talking about, changing from 2015 to now, we're pivoting from 60, six different target areas to one target area, but we're not leaving behind those organizations or groups that we've worked with in the past. This target area still includes our PDAs, it still includes our business improvement districts, it still includes the Federal Opportunity Zone, it includes the New Market Tax Credit Boundary, it includes the state community empowerment zone. Councilwoman Stratton, you worked with me on the community empowerment zone. Unfortunately, the state has not reauthorized that program for the last couple of years. We hope it will come back, but this boundary would also include all of that work that we had done.
Good.
And it includes the neighborhood business associations that we've historically worked with. Monroe, Garland, South Perry, Hilliard, West Central, all of them. So again, we're not going to sideline anybody that we've worked with in the past. They're included in this boundary. They are also in economically distressed census tracts. Projects of citywide significance. So now I'm switching from talking about the Economic Development Strategy to talking about a tool that the Economic Development Strategy draws upon. And I'm talking about projects of citywide significance. Earlier, when I mentioned the fact that this used to be a program that was targeted only to large projects, 5 million or greater, that's not built into the body of the administrative policy any longer. We could pick up a project to implement under projects of citywide significance if we had that funding and create it specifically for them, but that would be an attachment to the overall policy. So the overall policy will be nimble, so that all we would need to do is come to council and say, okay, this is a project, we have this amount of funding for, we're going to say that we're going to use projects of citywide significance to offer the incentive, and here's the criteria, and that would be attachment A, B, C, or D. So there's that. Then, again, it's not necessarily going to be limited to those multimillion dollar projects. It could be a project that is brought forward by you or I, that has an addition that we want to do to a small property that we own, okay? And it makes it more transparent. One of the things that we got a little bit of pushback from the public with projects of citywide significance is that we had to evaluate what the PERFORMA said for the project. We had to figure out how many dollars we projected that it would create in sales, property value increases, and utility tax. And then we would base that incentive on that. We would go to a committee, the committee would either agree with us, not agree with us, and then we would come to City Council to adopt it. This eliminates that review process and the subjective side of, of the program. It makes it very clear, cut, and dry what qualifies, what does not. So, when we're talking about projects of citywide significance and that first attachment with the criteria, it is funded by ARPA dollars that Councilwoman Kinnear had brought forward back in February. We're going to say that we're going to target this to affordable housing in that economically distressed census tract. It's going to provide assistance for the creation of new affordable housing. It's going to help target those negative impacts that we saw regarding housing security during the pandemic, and it's going to address the need for more affordable housing that we need. Again, just kind of giving you an idea about how distressed some of these economic census tracts are. What we're going to do with that attachment A and the criteria is the award, a project could qualify for up to $150,000 for creating multifamily housing. Now, not all projects are going to be needing $150,000 in permit fees paid, paid, because small projects, the permit fees, as you can see here, four to 10 units, on average, those permit fees, they're paying 25,000 to 35,000. On larger projects, though, we're seeing permit fees between 50,000 and 250,000. So for a large project, it's not necessarily going to pay all of their permit fees, but for small projects, it will. The awards can also be leveraged with multifamily tax exemption. Applications will be required. They will have to be in the Spokane targeted investment area, that green area of distressed census tracts on the map. They can be for owner or renter occupied units. They will set aside, very similar to multifamily tax exemption, because we plan to use it as the way to monitor these projects long-term, so that we know those ARPA dollars will actually turn the dial. So we're going to say that the set aside for rents are that 20% to 25%, depending upon if it's less than 12 units or more than 12 units. They will have to report on the status of the housing moving forward. They will also have to meet other small criteria, similar to multifamily tax exemption, and they will have to secure permits by October 31, 2023. Why? Because your window for spending your ARPA dollars, your American Rescue Plan dollars, is very small, and we want to make certain that if we can't spend that money during this period of time, that you have time to repurpose those funds. I think we will. As you saw, I think we can do approximately 30 projects, 20 of them smaller, 10 of them larger. Again, just talking about how distressed some of these census tracts, that where we will target these dollars are. Next steps, you'll see us back, well, you'll see this piece of legislation, the two pieces of legislation on the 28th for your final approval, and then August 15, we plan to have the website up, so that applications can start coming in on August 15. We'll take applications from August 15 to August 31st, first, or until the funding is exhausted. Now, we're not giving the developer a check, okay? We are paying the permit fees, which means we will pay our enterprise fund for those costs, and the developer will just kind of take out their permits as needed and bill it against a budget number. I think that concludes my presentation. Do you have questions?
Terry? Just if we adjusted the required units to 25% and 30%, that doesn't, does that have any other complication?
It would be very difficult if you had a four-unit project, that's one of those smaller micro projects. It would be difficult, because then you'd be talking 50% of the units.
For 25% would be one unit.
Excuse me, it would.
Okay.
So it would, that problem would come in between four and 11 units.
But F, okay. Okay, okay. But other than that, how, how do you round? Do you round up or down?
With multifamily tax exemption, which are the rules that we'd be working with, we round up.
Okay.
That it? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Our next resolution is requesting city administration enter negotiations with the owner of 4320 East Trent Avenue for the city's purchase of the building. Council President Beggs.
We just briefed that a few minutes ago, a committee, and again, City Administrator Perkins did a good job of negotiating with the owner of the building at our request and got a clause, an option clause, to buy it, and this would just ask him to execute on that, start negotiations as soon as possible. One of the main reasons is the community has offered to pay $700,000 improvements, I think, estimated, and then the city's looking at another 300,000, so that'd be a million dollars of value that would stay with the city. And although I trust that we will make great progress on homelessness in the next five years, the idea of having that one-stop place when we have smoke, cold, hot, where everyone knows where to go, and we have the capacity to surge, is going to be helpful going into the future, I think.
Thank you, Council President. Our next item, an ordinance relating to parking municipal codes and amending various sections of the Spokane Municipal Code. Our presenter is Luis Garcia.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. This was actually discussed at the June 6 Public Safety Committee meeting by Justin, went in detail about the upcoming changes. This is just basically bringing it back, and three of the, kind of the noted changes from the previous version is the adding back the use of meter bags as a reservation tool to identify the, the space, the addition of Juneteenth as a metered holiday, and the leaving the, the cost of the residential parking pass as, as it is right now. Any questions?
I just, what's the plan on the residential parking pass? Is that going to change next year? Is just doing nothing with it this time?
I would say that it's still under review, just how, because the correction, the addition of the $50 charge wouldn't have corrected the, you know, the really the value of that, that permit. So, right now, it just seemed like an inappropriate time to, to be having that conversation.
And I guess just anecdotally, based on what I've heard, I, I think the system needs to be a little bit more better organized before there's going to be some big changes to it, because it's very haphazard. Every department building runs it differently, and so it, there needs to be some continuity there.
Yes, sir.
And I think when we discussed, we also have to figure out a way from having certain landlords hike up the cost of those parking passes with.
By taking landlords out of the mix. By taking the landlords out of the mix.
Right.
Yeah, so, so my apologies, that is correct. So, you know, what we were finding is there was some, some really leveraging or abuse of that program, where landlords were charging administrative fees to basically, you know, provide a severely drastically discounted parking. It's not appropriate, so this way would improve the, the overall program by dealing with directly with the tenants and not necessarily the landlords.
Thanks.
So Luis, I was going to make an amendment, but I, it looks like I don't need to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Nice to see you. Our final item, Council President, members of the council, for the advanced agenda on Monday, July 18, hearings H1A and B. It's hearing on an interim zoning ordinance and the discussion on the interim zoning ordinance relating to more construction in residential zoning districts. Our presenter is Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. Spencer is out, so I will be doing this presentation on his behalf. The Building Opportunities and Choices for All interim zoning ordinance is proposed to follow the interim outline in RCW to enact swift action in the direct need for housing in the city. So this implements the mayor's housing emergency proclamation, council's implementation plan from the Housing Action Plan, and also strategies in the Housing Action Plan itself. Under state requirements, we are required to do a work plan if we wish to have it for a year-long pilot. So that is what we've proposed in the ordinance language itself. So during that one-year period, Planning and Services staff will be working with the community and specific stakeholders such as the builder community, housing advocacy work groups, to come up with appropriate language necessary to implement permanent code changes that removes barriers to building more housing units. In addition, during that one-year period, it's good to highlight, if you were a builder or an entity that wanted to build during the pilot, you would be vested, so to speak, for one year following the end of the pilot, so long as you are making appropriate progress to get land use approval, say for a plat, if you were doing townhomes or attached homes, or building permitting. I just want to note before I highlight the four sections of code, that these sections that we're talking about would apply to development under the pilot program. So developers have the option, if they wish to, build under our current code, but the pilot program allows for housing types that are not currently allowed in our residential zones and would provide for additional flexibility to encourage those housing types. But, so, to highlight for the development standards, we're removing the unit cap for attached homes or townhomes. That way, they are more feasible. It's one of the, the feedback pieces that we've heard from the development communities. We've made it very hard to build that ownership type. Another thing that we are proposing is allowing duplexes up to fourplexes on all residentially zone plots. So that is the draft language that you see in your agenda packet. At the June 27 PIES meeting, our planning director did present a range of options based on different buffers from centers and corridors and also major transit stops. I do have slides in the back of my deck in case you wish to look at those again, but we did put forward the up to four to allow for the greatest amount of flexibility in getting more construction of units in the city. So one of the ways that we're doing that is we're making adjustments to development standards, so that is allowing for higher building coverage, or removing FAR for certain housing types, making adjustments to the minimum lot sizes, et cetera. Another section of code specific to the pilot is about density. So the highlights here is that this is not changing the current density ranges that are in our code, so we're working within what's existing, but what we are allowing for is rounding up. So if you have 5.2, you can go up to 6. It's just an additional unit, but it's one of those small things that we think that really kind of helps push the envelope a little bit. We started drafting design standards in the Shaping Spokane Housing Project, and so we easily kind of took that initial work and we've applied it to the pilot program. So the intent here is to make sure that any building built under the pilot meets a minimum design criteria in architectural, kind of like excellence, if you will. What it does not do is dictate architecture. If you want to build modern or neo-tutor revival, you are completely welcome to do that, so long as you meet the design elements that are required in the design standards. So I've kind of highlighted on screen, there's things within each of those elements, landscaping, entrances, screening, that would be required, and then some that are considered presumptions for design standards, so you have some flexibility. for design standards, so you have some flexibility in how you meet them, as long as you're meeting the intent. The last piece that we added, which was kind of a last-minute piece, was to focus this on centers and corridors as well. So we wanted to try and find a way to incentivize that missing middle housing type in those areas. So what we've done is trying to incentivize mixed-use buildings that have a residential component, so to meet that threshold, you have to have 50% at least of your floor area dedicated to residential. And then some of the other things that we've done is reduced parking minimums. We put in a requirement for bike parking, and some of the stuff you'll see in the centers and corridors section is directly from the TOD framework, which our consultant recently completed in relation to the city line. But so we have a project page that went live on Friday. It's a little bit bare bones right now, but throughout this one-year work program, that will act as the clearinghouse for all information about the project. We're hoping to have kind of date and time metrics on how many we're getting permitted, what types, all of that sort of information. And the year-long public engagement piece that we will use that will inform the permanent code will also live there as well. Are there any questions I can answer?
Before you leave, thanks for, so just, she just briefed it as if it was final reading next week, but in order to do that, we would have to amend tonight's agenda to put it on first reading. In order to do that, we would have to suspend the rules. So I'm looking, if people want to do that, I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Any discussion about suspending the rules? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, the rules are suspended. Now, is there a motion to have this ordinance be heard at first readings tonight?
So moved.
Second. Okay, then first and second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of having first reading tonight indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? None? Okay, and now I understand there is a proposed amendment.
By me, and I circulated this, rather, Jacoby did, Thursday, July 7th. So I move to amend the ordinance that says, notwithstanding other provisions of Title 17 SMC, multifamily residential structures of three or four units shall be permitted on all lots in the RSF, RTF, RMF, and RHD zones, subject to the following criteria. A, and this is the part that will be underlined, the parcel is wholly or partially within one-quarter mile of a major transit stop, or B, the parcel is wholly or partially within one-half mile of a property zoned CC1, 2, 3, 4, CA1, CA2, CA3, and CA4, so centers and corridors essentially. And that's what Spencer had written down for me.
That was one of the options that we presented at PIES.
So there's a motion to do that. Is there a second?
So just, can you talk about that, just simple terms, what that means?
Yeah.
I thought that was simple.
So...
It was simple, but I just...
So what that would look like is an either-or situation. You'd be half a mile from the center and corridor zone, and that's if your parcel is wholly or even partially within a buffer. And then we would also include that half mile.
Quarter mile.
Or, yeah, excuse me, quarter mile from public transit.
And the alternative, if you didn't have that, is that it would be the entire city?
Correct.
So it limits the triplex and fourplex to...
To these areas only?
If you go back to that footprint of the hatched.
It would be limited, Council President Beggs is correct. It would be limited to triplex and fourplexes within those buffer areas. Duplexes would still be allowed citywide.
So we're back to the, then the fourplex is not available to go into the residential areas?
No, no.
Within half a mile, I mean...
It's there.
I see the hatch there, all the dark.
Yeah.
That's where fourplexes and triplexes.
That's our residential area.
Bus stops.
This would limit it to the hatched areas there.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So, sorry, we have a motion. I can speak to this after that, but...
But do you have a comment about the motion, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just, can we put that, oh, it's right there still. So the trouble here is that there's still certain portions that get excluded if we do it this way right here. For example, you know, East Hilliard has no access to transit, and because of that, I mean, that's led to some serious issues, but that keeps us from being able to increase housing there. I think one of the other issues that we can do here is we can artificially be inflating certain property costs as opposed to doing them all the way across the city. So I think it would be best for us to do it citywide as opposed to just in the, you know, centers and corridors or from frequent transit. I think that, again, this is something that should be available to all, so.
Yeah, I just wanted, I totally get, I just want to clarify, it's not within centers and corridors, within a half a mile. So it's bigger than the centers and corridors, but it's that, but it's not everywhere.
Right, right.
Yep.
Yeah, half a mile of centers and corridors, right?
Yeah.
Or a quarter mile from transit, yeah.
So Karen, Councilmember Stratton, we talked about this already, and you actually pointed to it and said, I agree with this. This was two meetings ago. So part of the reason I did this was based on your feedback as well.
Oh, okay.
Just saying. And to your point, we want this, we want this to work, and if we're doing it everywhere, we're creating something that's artificial. In other words, we haven't done any studying on what additional traffic is going to take place within every neighborhood. We haven't, so we're encouraging people to actually hop on a bus and be able to walk to services rather than get in their car, which is going to have impact on our entire city and the traffic that's going to increase ultimately down the road.
Yeah, I guess, you know, where I come from, I think I prefer to let the market be that determiner as opposed to us, because certain parcels are going to be cheaper, certain areas are going to be able to, you know, more affordable for development than others. And so I think that the more that we allow, then the more development that we're going to see that we're trying to encourage.
And that's true of any...
I think if we narrow the scope, then it makes it harder.
It's true for anything. That's the case right now, where there's certain areas that are cheaper to build than others.
Yep.
And that's never going to change, no matter what. So what we're doing is, what I'm doing, is trying to protect our infrastructure so that we're not putting undue burden on it as we go forward.
Sure. I guess the difference would be, you know, removing barriers versus adding barriers, and I think that this would be adding a barrier to development if we didn't do it all the way around the city.
I would respectfully disagree.
All right. Any other, Councilmember Wilkerson?
Difficult call, but this is just interim for one year. It will be monitored to see how much development this does incur during that period of time. Like Terry Stripe said, this will all go up in one year, and we'll see how impactful this is at this time, and then we will have the ability to come back and reevaluate it. But it is a one-year, it does get to carry over because I asked, we can't bill it. You will have a window of time if you get your permit in place. Right, Amanda, speak to that clearly again.
Correct, Councilmember Wilkerson. So if you start the process while the interim is still in place and then it ends before you are able to complete, say, the actual building permit, you would still be allowed to complete your development. So what we're looking for is earnest progress on your land use permit, so your plat for your townhomes, or the building permit for your duplex or fourplex.
But that presumes that the pilot ends after one year, and hopefully that's not the case, right? Hopefully, we're able to see some sort of permanence continue on after one year and as we see some successes and positives that come out of this.
Yes, Councilmember Cathcart, we also do have the option to extend another six months. That would require holding a public hearing, and we can cross that bridge when we come there, but the ultimate goal is to create permanent code changes, which would also be supplemented by comprehensive plan amendments that would change the land use chapter in support of allowing more housing types throughout the city.
And Spencer did clarify with City Legal, too, that we can make modifications along the way. If something comes up, a builder, you know, points something out, or a community member points something out, we can revisit and change, even if it's before that one year.
Yeah, I do believe that he checked with legal on that, and what that might just entail is doing another public hearing to let people know this might be a major change in how the pilot is currently operating.
Any other comments? I'll just, I'm going to vote in favor of the amendment, just because I think this is great. I'm totally in favor of it. Councilmember Cathcart and I spoke with the mayor in favor of this, but when we spoke in favor of it, it was for this version, actually, was what we spoke in favor of. And I think some neighborhoods are, this is going to be a bit of a shock for them. So I like the compromise for a year, and then at the end of that year, do it. So it's kind of the flip side of your argument, like, hey, it's only for a year, and so we could go back to this at the end of the year. So I just barely go to the other side on it, but, so I'm going to support the amendment, but I just, I love this idea in general. So all those in favor of Councilmember Kinnear's amendment?
Point of, was there a second? I never heard a second to the motion.
I was second for...
Oh, okay.
But all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, so it's three to three. Miss Councilmember Zepone is gone, so amendment fails for now, but next week it could be...
Excuse me, could you raise your hands as to who was the ayes and the nays?
The first three were the ayes.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. So we may revisit the amendment next week, so anyway, I think that's, yeah, it's already on the agenda. So that's all we need from you, Amanda, I think. Another agenda, before we get to approve the advanced agenda, if you look at item 18 on tonight's consent agenda...
So, which one are we on? Did we vote this?
We haven't yet, but I'm just, I had a request to get all agenda things done so that people can get signed up.
Item what?
Item 18 on page seven of the July 11th agenda. The request to add the low bid for baking concrete. Is there a motion to add that to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Second, yeah.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of adding item 18 to tonight's consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, now, back, I think we got to the end of the advanced agenda.
We are at the end.
Is there a motion to approve...
Sorry, Council President, I don't know if you want to do this now or do it when we do the current agenda, but the ordinance C36223, that was briefed on the parking changes, those changes are not yet in our packet, so we will need a motion for that, the ones that Louis briefed us on.
Motion to substitute, or what?
Yes, I can show you the...
Okay, we'll get to the substitutes, but it's already on the agenda, right?
Yes, it's on for first reading tonight and final reading for next week.
Great, I will make a note to do a motion to substitute when we get to that.
We have this to defer.
On...
Forfeitures.
Oh, thank you. All right, council, well, all right, before we get to the advanced agenda, could you, you have a motion to defer?
I do. On our Monday, July 11th, ordinance six, C36193, motion to defer for, how long do you want, a month, two months?
Where are we at? So we're on page eight of tonight's agenda. It's the forfeitures ordinance, the first one, 36193. Can we do it till August 2nd, or August 1st?
Okay, so a motion to defer this until August 1st.
Second.
Based on a conversation with Chief Mydl. Thank you.
Yeah, we reached an agreement on this in principle, and he requested that we not vote on it tonight because he wants to vote on something. But is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring C36193 until August 1st indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred. All right, now, back to, all those in favor of approving the advanced agenda for July 18th as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is approved, and now we get to finish briefing tonight's agenda. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President, members of the city council. Advanced agenda for Monday, July 11th, this is on our consent agenda. Items 1, 2, and 3. Item 1, purchase from Q Digitt for a backhoe loader for the water department. Item 2, approval to purchase lease nine units for various departments. And item 3, a six-month lease from Levitt for a forklift needed for daily operations. Our presenter on all three is Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council. First one is a purchase from Q Digitt, which is a funny name for a really versatile piece of equipment, $150,000, or $150,287.45. That's for water. Any questions on that one? Second is a preapproval to purchase nine units for various departments. Those various departments are, eight of them are solid waste collections, one of them is code, and this is another preapproval so that we don't miss out on opportunities to purchase and the prices don't go up. That is an estimate of 1.165 million. And then the last one, six-month lease from Levitt for a forklift that waste energy needs. We've got a new one ordered, but it'll be a while before it shows up, and they need it for operational purposes. And that's it, any questions?
So the nine units on number two here, do we have any idea what those nine are?
Yeah, it's attached here, and the, for solid waste, an F-600 container carrier, well, the F-600 plus the container carrier body, and then the Mack Terra Pros with the roll-off bodies, and then rear-load garbage truck, and then a track loader, skid steer loader for code.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Item 4, contract amendment with Lewis Armored. The briefer is Connor Thorne.
Thank you, Johnny, Council President, council. On behalf of the city's Treasury Department, seeking to extend our citywide contract with Loomis through end of April, April 30th, thereby pushing the effective start date of our statewide contract with Loomis effective May 1, 2022. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Thorne.
Thank you.
Item 5, a memorandum of agreement with Avista Corporation. Our briefer is Chris Peterschmidt.
Good afternoon. This memorandum with Avista allows them to install electronic monitoring equipment inside the security fence, but outside our building at the Clark Avenue lift station, they pick up the signal of the river gauge from the USGS and transmit it back to their facility. Right now, there's a several day, up to a couple-week delay on that information, and so they're installing this equipment to get that quicker, so we're just allowing them inside the fence, so.
Question on that, is it normal for the city to enter into agreements for 50 years?
This one does, probably not normally, but because this one is such low impact and we expect to be there forever, that we didn't see a downside, and there is a severance clause in there that both sides can back out of it.
Okay.
So. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Item 6, a contract renewal with Itron for meter reading support services for the water department. Our presenter is Tanya Reese.
Good afternoon. It's a proposed contract for the Itron support of existing meter reading equipment and software that we use to make the meters through June of 2023. Stacker recommends approval for the contract renewal. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Tanya. Nice to see you. Item 7, 8, 9, and 10. Item 7, contract amendment with Nicholas Kovach Engineering. Item 8, low bit of Samrock paving. Item 9, low bit of La Barrera, Inc., and item 10, low bit of home construction. Our briefer, Dan Buller.
Good afternoon again. Item 7, it's a proposed amendment to the contract with Nicholas Kovach Engineering for the design of the hatch bridge deck replacement. for the design of the hatch bridge deck replacement. Proposed amendment to mount is 16,500. Original contract will not be quite enough to complete the work due to some construction phase issues. By the way, we expect that project to open later this week, hopefully, or early next week, which will be ahead of schedule. Item 8, it's a proposed low-bid contract with Shamrock Paving of Spokane for the paving of the currently unpaved 44th Avenue between Crestline and Altamont. The low bid was approximately 693,000, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project is one of the paving unpaved streets projects that council authorized several years back. This project is paid with TBD funds as well as local impact fees. We expect construction to occur this fall. And item 9, proposed low-bid contract with La Riviera of Rathdrom, Idaho for the paving of the currently unpaved north side locations shown in your briefing packet. The low bid was approximately 469,000, to which we propose to set aside an administrative reserve. This project is also one of the paving unpaved streets that council authorized a few years ago, and is paid for entirely with TBD funds. Again, construction this fall. And finally, item 10, it's a proposed low-bid contract with Homie Construction of Spokane for the TJ Menoc Street and Utilities Project. The low bid was approximately 3.6 million, to which, again, we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project is one of five projects that make up Cochrane Basin Stormwater Projects, one of which was constructed last summer, one of which is underway now, the Treatment Swales, which I briefed you on two weeks ago, this one, and then one more to be bid this fall. Because of material delays, this project will be constructed in 2023.
I have a question, sorry. Do we have any controls in place, or do we monitor companies that may underbid and then seem to come back with a higher number? Does that happen often? Do we keep track of that, and, or do we have any controls in place for that?
Yes. The, what ends up happening on every project, there's, because we don't have perfect designs, I confess, there will always be change orders, and so most projects are within the 10% administrative reserve. Some projects go over that, and then we're back in front of you all, contractors, but it's a low-bid environment as dictated by state law. So we have limited options for getting rid of contractors that submit excessive change orders. We just hold firm when they ask for ridiculous change orders, you know, we say no. But all projects are going to have some change orders built in there. Ultimately, the contractor who makes his money by way of change orders goes out of business. That's just not a business model that lasts over the long term. Did that answer the question?
Absolutely, yeah. So I'm a general contractor myself, I typically understand how bidding works, but I guess you and I, if we could sit down some other time and go over this, I'm curious how we go through that, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
And I just wanted to note, I'm super excited about the 44th Avenue paving, because that will open up a very nice route between Regal and Crestline, which will alleviate a lot of congestion there, so thank you for doing that.
If only we could do between Freya and Havana.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Item 11 on the Monday, July 11th consent agenda is a contract with Local 270, the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees for wages and salaries. Our presenter is Mr. Mike Piccolo. Mr. Piccolo makes his way to the dais. I'd like to pay special recognition to City Attorney Mike Orangeby and our Public Works Director Marlene Feist, who were our lead negotiators in this contract with 270. They did a terrific job, and I want to recognize both them for their outstanding work. Mr. Piccolo.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and Marlene is here if we have any additional questions that I cannot answer. But this is a CBA with Local 270 that the membership voted to approve about two weeks ago. Council's already been approved, had already been briefed on this item, so it's up for approval for tonight. The past couple of days, I've had a chance to work with the Local 270 reps to go through the 52-page document to make sure we caught everything, so we did find a few typos, a few clerical errors, and just maybe about half a dozen wordsmithing edits that we want to make. So we provided that to the clerk's office and to the council, so we would ask for a motion to switch out the one that's in your packet right now with the one that's been filed with the clerk's office. And 270 has forwarded those edits to us, and so they're in full support of those minor wordsmithing edits.
So, did that get circulated to us yet?
Yes.
It did?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to substitute?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's substituted.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. Item 12, budget amendment with Catholic Charities of Spokane for rapid rehousing. Our briefer and presenter is Heather Page.
Thank you again. So this is the other half of the ESG entitlement, the normal grant that we get on a yearly basis. Again, it's part of that five-year award that we have with contracts with our providers, and we're just amending it for that year award. Any questions?
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Item 13, a contract amendment with the Volunteers of America for additional funding from the Community Development Block Grant Account. Jen Sarrisides.
Hi there, so we are asking to grant additional funding from the CDBG funds to the homeless youth shelter and to extend the contract date to June 30th, 2023. It's an increase of $750,000.
Thank you, Jen. Item 14, contract amendment with GHD Incorporated out of Seattle. Our presenter is Marcia Davis.
Good afternoon. This amendment will add groundwater modeling, will add groundwater modeling to the contract with GHD to study the potential of climate change on the drinking water wells. Thank you. Any questions?
Does it, I mean, is there other, other than impactful climate change, does it provide any other data that we can use for other purposes?
This will, this will become a baseline for us to be able to determine the productivity of the wells. We have data on the wells, the production. Most of our wells have been around for quite a few years. We have one new well that we're building right now, constructing right now, but it'll provide that data. It'll be looking backwards and looking forward, so we can make some projections of what kind of projection, what kind of production we will see in the future. And we'll be using this, the GHD contract is for looking at the future, for looking at capital programming of what kind of, what kind of water supply we will need for growth, and it will take in consideration conservation and different types of growth, more intensity.
So it's, it's a big project.
So yes, it will be looking at more than just climate change, but that's the basis of the modeling.
And Marcia, I was talking with Catherine, Catherine Miller, about this, and she indicated also that it'll give us data on if we need to drill not only additional wells, but go deeper to get water that's in the aquifer, which, as you said, would impact our capital costs and our infrastructure that, you know, we're all concerned about, because we, we are woefully behind in terms of creating infrastructure for the future.
Yes, most of, all of our wells, except the one we're building right now, were hand-dug, so they only dug as deep, they only excavated as deep as they needed to, which made a lot of sense when you're hand-digging that well. So there's a lot of opportunity to go deeper. The aquifer is a lot deeper, has a lot more depth in some areas, that we could easily improve our production by doing a redoing the well and dropping them, yes. Any questions?
Thank you, Marcia. Item 15, an inter-local agreement with Spokane Public Schools to reimburse the school district for repaving a portion of Wellesley Avenue. Our presenter is Marlene Feist.
Thank you, Johnny. So this item is just our inter-local agreement with Spokane Public Schools. This is for a portion of Wellesley that's actually a residential or local access street next to the new Pauline Flatt, I think it's Pauline, yeah, the Pauline Flatt Middle School, trying to keep all those names straight where they are in the community. This road was only going to be about two-thirds of it from, in width, to be repaved, so we're adding some additional money to that project, so it can go curb-to-curb, basically, for those residents up there, and really manage the bus traffic and other things that the school will see.
Why would they only have to be responsible for two-thirds of the road?
That was what was the permit condition, and it's because it's a local access street, council member. So that's one of the things I was going to work with Steve McDonald's team, to see if there's a way that we, when we know we're going to have larger impact from a traffic standpoint, that we look at it a little differently. Unfortunately, we didn't have that conversation prior to that permit being issued, so that's probably something we need to look at in the future, because the bus traffic in particular can be pretty hard. This was, you know, an older residential street, basically a couple inches of asphalt on native soil, so it was not going to stand up to that, and really would have probably caused a problem up there, so.
Gotcha.
Marlene, the neighborhood thanks you.
Thank you.
Marlene, if you could stand by for 30 seconds, because you're up next on the Traffic Calming Fund. I'm just going to read this. Item 16, report of the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, 16A and B, 16C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations, and 17, city council meeting minutes, all will be completed for this evening's council discussion and consideration. Moving then to, yes, sir.
I don't think we've had a bid that reported on 18, Dan.
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
We added it.
It was added.
Can you give us a report?
But no report, yeah.
I don't know if it matters.
He is no longer here, sir.
Okay, continue.
Moving ahead, I know we deferred the ordinance for forfeitures, so, Marlene, back to you on the Traffic Calming Measures Fund arising from the need to provide budget authority for additional paving work in the vicinity of the new middle school.
All right, so this is the same thing. This is the SBO to accommodate the payment for that.
I had a question. So how did we decide to use traffic calming? Because I don't think it came through our committee.
It did. We worked through with Councilmember Stratton and with Shawna, and I got approval through a bunch of emails, so whether that missed you, Council President, I don't know.
It didn't go through our traffic calming work group, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
So that's the only, I mean, I'm for the project, I just didn't know whether it should come out of street funds or traffic calming funds.
Especially given the small amount, I mean, it seems like it's a good deal.
Well, you're on traffic calming work group, right? Okay, so the two of, I just want to honor the process so that this doesn't become, in the future, as long as you and I are in agreement, and Zach's a sponsor, so, okay, great.
Thank you, Marlene. Resolutions and final reading ordinances, providing for a boundary adjustment between the city parcel and county parcel. Our presenter and briefer is Chris Avery.
Good afternoon, council members. This proposed resolution is a boundary adjustment to transfer property ownership to Spokane County. This property borders the Colbert Transfer Station and Colbert Landfill, and was provided by the city to the county in the early 90s for construction of a gas treatment facility to service the landfill. Ownership was not officially transferred at that time, and this resolution would resolve that oversight. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two resolutions specify a process of timeline for leasing the former East Central Library, as well as concerning the signing of a new police precinct in the East Central Neighborhood, and both those, Council President, begs.
Yeah, so the first one has to do with the public engagement process on using the former East Central Library. We've talked for about a year about a public process, but we haven't set one out, and this would set out a request for information, which is slightly different than a request for proposal, and it would invite proposals from agencies out there who want to use it, who could show they had the money to pay rent, so that we could keep up the improvements of the building, and then have an open house for the community, and there's a timeline on it. That's on that one. The second one is kind of related, and that's the police precinct, and that's a resolution saying that we definitely should find a new home for our East Central Police Precinct, it's been on East First Avenue, so we need to find a new home for it. Doesn't add any new officers to the neighborhood, but it would make a more comfortable place, hopefully. And so the question is where it would best be located, and so this takes the approach, the proposal, that it should be in the East Spring Corridor, that's where the most crime reports are, that's where it's most publicly visible and accessible, and, but it urges the administration to go to one of those empty buildings and get that figured out, much like the downtown precinct, really the same model, so that they would be there and they could do foot patrols and bike patrols there where the crime's taking place.
So how many do, how many police officers are we planning to have in this precinct?
It's, my understanding, it's the same amount that are in the East Central Precinct, which is eight.
Eight.
So they're, well, up until a week ago, they were on East First Avenue in St. Anne's. So it doesn't change the number of officers. It might be the capacity, if we have more space, that we could have those behavioral health specialists there, like we do at the downtown precinct, but it doesn't intend to change the staffing, just where they're located.
Then how many do we have in the downtown precinct?
We're supposed to have 15, but I don't know.
In the downtown precinct, just police officers? How many are we supposed to have down there?
Okay, so is this better?
Yes, sir. Although we can hear your booming voice, it's, thank you, Chief.
So just a point of clarification, we actually have seven assigned out of the South Precinct. However, they report to the South Precinct, but we also have two of those seven that work out of the cop shops. So while their chain of command, the captain, lieutenant, detectives are in the South Precinct, the goal in the partnership with the cop shops was to have two officers actually work out of the cop shops, so that seven will be five that will work directly out of the South Precinct, for now. In terms of the downtown, we have about 15 actual officers assigned there, plus a lieutenant, plus a captain, and two sergeants, so about 19 total.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
And are they staffed? Are we fully staffed there, downtown?
We are not. We have, downtown, we have two, I believe it's two, it might actually now be three vacancies, just with attrition and retirements right now, we're waiting to get some bodies to refill those.
Bodies, think about.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. The next resolution is requiring that all future City of Spokane-funded homeless service provider contracts include a good neighbor agreement, council members Stratton and Cathcart. I know we briefed that at Urban Experience this afternoon, so probably not much more to.
No, we briefed it earlier.
All right, thank you very much. Our next item is an amending ordinance that vacates Mallon Avenue from the West Line of Section 16.
Oh, we, Ms. Pfister's mentioning that we need to substitute on that. So on Resolution 2022 0061, is there a motion to substitute?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's substituted. Now, back to you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Brown, you're up.
Just trying to find it on the map here. We briefed this one a couple of weeks ago. It was actually the releasing an easement on the Iron Bridge campus. Still trying to find it here, but what we're doing is, actually, we had an easement on Perry Street on the Iron Bridge Campus that originally had easements attached to it. We amended the ordinance and got rid of the easements on there, so the developer can actually build fully on those parcels that he has. I'll see if I can still find it here.
Ellen, I can, I can pull it up for you.
It's like it vanished.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one right there. Basically, that area cross-hatched in red under, we originally had easements tagged that when it was vacated back in the 1990s, and so we're in there, released easements. You can see it kind of crosses two parcels there on the Iron Bridge Campus, and we're actually just releasing easements on there, so they can fully build on that property. And we did ship it around all the various utility purveyors in there, and they agreed that we could get rid of the easements there. Originally, you can kind of see that north edge of that crosshatched area lines up with Mallon Avenue, which was also part of the original vacation. We do have utilities in Mallon, and we've kept all the easements on that portion of it, but. it, but everybody was okay with releasing what's shown in red on the Perry Street portion of it. So be happy to answer any questions about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. Under first reading ordinances, I believe Mr. Garcia had previously briefed that a few moments ago as it relates to municipal codes and parking, and then our last.
Excuse me. Sorry to interrupt. That's the one that we need to substitute also. It's the one that council member Kinnear emailed us about earlier today, or Giacobi, with the changes for adding Juneteenth as due parking holiday.
Oh.
And adding meter bag and adding an S to device.
Is Luis still here? That's why I asked him if he.
If he's, if he's.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a motion to substitute 36223?
Oh, I'll make that motion, yes.
Second.
Move second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, that's substituted.
And our final item is a hearing on the interim zoning ordinance amending the Spokane Municipal Code on an interim basis regarding the siding of indoor shelters.
Okay, and that's just, we've already passed it once, but we had to have a public hearing under the terms, so people could testify about it, and then we would vote on it, so.
Mr. Richmond's here, if you wanted to walk through your options.
Want to tell us what our options are for the hearing? Then you don't have to come back tonight.
Just for the record. Just so you don't have to come down tonight, James.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, this is the hearing that's required when we adopt these kind of interim ordinances, and the options, I suppose, are to either decide to cancel it or to extend it or to just let it run its course. And right now, the ordinance is set to run through November, I believe, and so by then, I presume that we would have the Trent Shelter up and running, and so if the ordinance were to expire, the shelter could continue to operate as a legal non-conforming use, but if we wanted to make this a permanent change, so that these kinds of facilities are always allowed in heavy industrial zones, we would need to go through our regular plan, planning process and bring back an ordinance.
So it says pass upon roll call vote. Are we voting on anything tonight?
I think all you would need to do tonight is, is bring a motion to ratify the findings of fact that were adopted the last time around.
So basically, we're saying after we've heard from the public, do we still agree with it?
Yes.
Okay, but as far as it becoming permanent, that comes later.
That can come later, yes.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. McGlatty.
It runs through November?
What'd you say?
Runs through November. Okay.
Of this year.
This year.
So it just means we have to do something before November.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as modified?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's there, and then we're going to have an executive session until 5:35 to talk about labor negotiations in Council Lounge. Those of you who are watching, we don't anticipate any further business, but we'll come out at 5:35 unless we extend it and close the meeting, and we do have our legislative meeting at 6:00 p.m. So people in Council Lounge.
City Council is extending executive session for nine minutes until 5:44 PM. Again, no further action is expected when they return.
That's what I would do. We can even get them.
Hello, this is Council President Breehan Beggs, just noting that we finished our executive session and we are adjourning our briefing session and we'll be starting our legislative session at 6:00 PM.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website.